Call the meeting to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven thirty P. M. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon.
All right, stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. A moment of silence, please. Dear heavenly Father, we come before you first of all thankful and grateful that you allowed us to sit in these chambers. We ask by the power of your spirit, you enable us to make good and prudent decisions on the behalf of our city. We ask that you look down on our city and give it a special blessing, that you look after those who are less fortunate and those who are in need of help. We ask this in your name. Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no beginning, justice, and law.
Approval of the minutes from the three, March first, two thousand and twenty-three, city council meeting, and bills for payment on March seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-ninth. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
We have no presentations tonight. Moving forward with the agenda, is there anyone here to speak on a repository sale? Come up to the podium. Repository sales. Anyone here for a repository sale? You've got a list of questions in front of you about the repository sale.
Yes, I have one.
All right. Would you like to answer those for us?
So can I give the answers?
Yes.
The all properties we're looking for on the repository list is all vacant lands. And we plan to flip the lands and put it back in the market and get the, put it back and sell those lands and have the taxes back to the town. The, the properties, it's, they are in good condition. Some of them have some trash in the, in the lands, the lots, but we're going to keep clean. We're going to hire a company here who can take care of those properties as long as it's in our names. We don't live here, but we are very proud to be here in the town. We love the town and we like to do business here and to keep it doing so. And we're going to, like I said, hire a local company so then they can manage the properties for us.
Any other questions from council?
Sir, which properties are you here to speak about?
We have a list of twenty properties. We have the list here. Do you want me to read the addresses?
Nope, I'll just get a copy of that, too.
Sure. Be here.
Thank you. So did you receive a letter from the zoning office with all the requirements?
We got an email from you guys. We, we was asking to come here to have the petition. Besides of that, we don't have, receive anything else.
And is there some way to reach you? Somebody has your phone number or?
I have your email, right?
Yes, you do.
You have my email?
From Massachusetts, that's correct. I can give my phone number as well if you like to.
We'll get it from the email.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else for a repository sale? Anyone else for a repository sale? Anyone else to a repository sale? Moving on to public comments. I would like to ask the public to clearly state your name. There's a paper at the podium for your address if you're not comfortable sharing that publicly. You have five minutes for public comments.
Good afternoon, council and mayor. My name is Ed Dawson. I live at forty-eight twelve Wood Street, Erie, PA. I am, I come to talk about golf situation here. It appears that you have raised the rates and limited golfers. And to be explicit, when I, when I came to get my membership, as I have for the past ten years or so, they said, why don't we cut out where you can register early and pay and you get a little discount, I think maybe five or ten bucks or something of the nature, but they cut that out. Then they said to me that as a golfer, if you get a membership, you can't golf before twelve o'clock on Saturdays or the weekends. First, it was weekends. So I didn't know what weekends meant. Is that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or is that Saturday, Sunday? So it wasn't defined, but says you can't golf before twelve o'clock. Then too, they said, on holidays, you can't golf before twelve o'clock on holidays. There are some members in the audience, and I hope I'm clear and concise and I used my five minutes wisely. And thank you for letting me speak. Here's what we represent. We have about forty golfers. We're called Brothers Linked Together. We golf on Mondays, right? That's our first piece. We also golf Wednesdays and Saturdays. Now, that would cut in, and if I explain this well to you, please listen. So if we had residents at, say, six hundred, of which you've raised it, that's about six hundred bucks to twenty people, that's about twelve thousand. If they're non-residents of the forty we're talking about, that's about thirteen thousand. If you're a senior citizen, that's about ten thousand. If twenty are just seniors, of course, there's more. As I said to you, about forty of us. We also have a league that we have been doing for the past eight years. And so we consider ourselves ambassadors. We're free public relations to the city. What we do is we bring people from Buffalo, from Cleveland, to come in and golf with us on Saturday mornings. You're suggesting that we not do that until after twelve. So you would like a senior citizen to have the sun beat down on him on a Saturday or Sunday afternoon because some made a, someone made a decision. Well, it affects us gravely. Well, here's how it might affect you. Somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-five thousand dollars, if we choose not to get a membership anymore, we'll go to another course. Let me tell you what you've already done. We have another thirty that golfs on Sundays that used to come there. They no longer do. They're called the Sunday League. Some of you up there belong to it. You no longer come to Downing. So you've lost them. What you've done for just a couple dollars is really create a grave ass hole for the seniors. For the seniors. So it had to be a young person who thought, we don't want you golfing that early anymore. We might can get more money in with young people than you seniors. So you seniors, you go to the back of the bus. It is the only place where a membership defines how you cannot golf. You cannot golf versus how you can golf. This doesn't even include the holidays. So every time there's a holiday, we can't golf. You gotta go in the morning. Let me be explicit with you. You have to golf about twenty-three times a year just to equal that senior membership. I've already said to you, we golf every Wednesday and Saturday. That means that on the holidays, that no one coming into town can't get on before noon. Will Ohio and New York still come with us, the forty? And you're getting cash money from them. As your ambassador, I would say, no, they're not gonna do that. And we want you to reconsider gravely what you're about to do. Because we will move. We're not begging you, we paying money. You ever seen a golfer just come out and just hit a ball and go? Never happens. We eat, we drink, we socialize, we buy your hats. So we buy your material and we promote our city because we love it. Right on here to give you a hard time. My brother mayor, my alum mayor, my friendly mayor, and to the council. I want you to seriously reconsider discontinuing letting the golfers play on weekends. You're about to lose about thirty to forty thousand dollars. So if the new guy who came up with this eye can make up that money, have at it. If you lost Sundays, remember what happens thereafter. We don't come on Saturdays anymore. That's twenty plus carts. Just alone, the carts are nine thousand dollars. You wanna do that? You sure? If someone wants to take a look at that and I can leave that with the head so he can pass it on to think about it, we are brothers linked together and we're also another group. So if you're welcome to have that, you can. Gives you some idea of the kind of money we bring to the city. Weekly, weekly. I heard the bell ring, mean time to sit down?
Yes, thank you, sir.
I hope you wise individuals will reconsider your, your six dollar, non-compliant, non-membership deal to your ambassadors.
Thank you, sir.
You don't wanna hurt your ambassadors of the city. If you believe in what I'm saying, would you stand up? Taxpayers, taxpayers, taxpayers.
My name is James Edward Bowen, twenty-four forty-seven East Twenty-Sixth Street. I'm also here to talk about Downing Golf Course. And some of the biggest concerns are the check, the, the senior rate is fifty-five and above can play a senior rate. Now, we still have fifty-five and above people that are working Monday through Friday. So they wanna come and play Saturday and Sunday, but they can't play till noon. Now me, when I was that age, I would rather play golf in the morning, cut my grass in the afternoon, not vice versa. And the other thing that some people have asked me to talk about is the condition of the course and the equipment. The golf carts, when you go out to ride in those golf carts, they're horribly, horribly dirty. There are cigarette butts left in the containers, there's mud on the floor, and it's just not right. People should be cleaning that up. We also have on green number seventeen at Downing, a large strip where the, the, the greens mower leaked some hydraulic fluid. It was about fifty feet long. And if you don't, don't know, hydraulic fluid kills the green. That green was never touched for two years. So then it was unfixable just by cleaning it up. They had to cut some, some spots out of the, the putting green to put into the green to try and make it, you know, presentable. We have tons of geese out there. I don't know how to get rid of them, but they eat and dig holes in the greens. Their, their, their solution was to fill the green with sand and some type of black stuff that they say the geese won't eat. But as, as most of you know, Downing hosts some tournaments out there. They, they just had last year, the match play out there for, for the city. And I work at, at Lawrence Park and I had guys coming in telling me they would never ever spend another dime at Downing because of the condition the course was in for that tournament. So I'm asking you to look at the people who are responsible for the condition of the course, and again, to take a look at, at the, the fees that says we cannot play before noon on Saturday, Sunday, and specific holidays. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council. My name is Dominic Bazanco. My primary residence is thirty-six ten Harvard Road. That's four blocks off of Green Garden Boulevard. I'd like to state that I do not support any new bike path to go through that area at all. My secondary residence is forty-seven twenty-four Cherry Street. That's in Glenwood, and I'd like to state that I do not support any addition of Airbnb zoning changes into that neighborhood at all. What brings me up here tonight is about a month ago, I stood in front of you to speak against the Coquah Club, pardon me, Coquah Bridge down in that neighborhood there. I had asked if you had spent six hundred and some thousand dollars in studies, and you did. You spent it. And I stood before you and I told you that you're probably spending more money in studies than actual replacement of that bridge would cost. And then your bids came in. Two million dollars to three million dollars for replacement, not counting the three-quarter million dropped into already in dismantling and bidding it out. Now, your bids came in at a Cadillac price. They designed every cent out of that six hundred and some thousand dollars you got out there. Every penny, they spent it all for two to three million dollars. Well, the problem with Erie is we're on a Kia budget and you guys got Cadillac bids. So I want to tell you something. It wasn't too long ago, maybe twenty years, ran a highway up through the Lower East Side of Pennsylvania, Erie, Pennsylvania there, split a neighborhood in two, nobody said a damn thing. Then there's another set, another bridge, not too far up the road from that, that connected two entire parts of the city, the Lower East Side, the Middle East Side. And that bridge sat and decayed and decayed and decayed and the city didn't give a crap because there was a little bit of a bridge a few hundred feet away. So now you're looking at taking two to three million dollars from the city of Erie and the county people and going out and dropping it onto a sixty-foot bridge. Now I want to ask you, how many of you will pay three million dollars as a toll to drive sixty feet? And do you think that's fair to the taxpayers of the city of Erie and the taxpayers of the county that you're trying to rip off with this thing? Sixty feet for three million dollar bid? I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's a just way to spend our money. And it wasn't just maybe two months ago, a comment came from this side of the dais speaking to a formal councilwoman, reminding her that she did not work for the fifth floor. And I'd like to all remind, like to remind every one of you about that again. Three million dollars, sixty feet. Would you pay it? Do you wanna pay it? Do you want it coming out of your pocket instead of driving around a block, just like you told everybody on East Side? You drop three million dollars in that neighborhood, what are you all gonna look like for people on that side of town? Now, thank you for your time.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor. I can get my glasses. My name is Paul DeRamo. My wife and I reside at thirty-three oh four Green Garden Boulevard and we belong to the Green Garden Association. We love the neighborhood and take pride in keeping our home and properties well maintained. This is accomplished a lot of hard work by every, by us every season with the help of local contractors for tree maintenance, trimming, tree lawn. Last year, we had an HVAC system, new one put in, plus landscaping projects. It's just to name a few. I am aware of the most recent revision email sent to the association this past Monday from Mr. Millet regarding the city of Erie planned to step back on the bikeway project to obtain additional resident input. We are all for accurate information gathering, which is key in making of any decisions. However, why was the first email disregarded so quickly? Because the following two days later, it was like a total reversal. As a homeowner and a taxpayer, on-street parking is vital when we have family over, we entertain our friends, we have guests. As I mentioned earlier, we have contractors that use the on-street parking to service and maintain the lovely properties on Green Garden. We have Mount Calvary Church on the corner of Thirty-second and, and Green Garden that uses their parking lot as well as overflow parking on Green Garden for Sunday services, special holidays, that type of thing. And all the residents are fine with that. I mean, that's just, it's part of the neighborhood. That's who we are. We get along with people. We, you know, we, we encourage that type of camaraderie. There are businesses on Green Garden where on-street parking is vital to performance and success of their business. Eliminating on-street parking would unnecessarily create a burden to the taxpayers, the church, and the businesses. Now, I just, I want to be clear. We are not against the bikeway on Green Garden Boulevard. We own bikes, enjoy riding them through the city and Mill Creek. Honestly, I don't think there's going to be hundreds of bicyclists enjoying a ride up and down Green Garden at a given time or every day of the week. I also know there will not be hundreds of vehicles parked on Green Garden at a given time or every day of the week. I'm aware of other areas in the city where share the road works very, very well. And it, they've, they've tested it out and it just works. I feel share the road is a win-win for all parties. So in my humble opinion, sharing a road with bicyclists on Green Garden is a great option. I want to thank you for your time and for consideration on this matter. I also have a neighbor of mine, Anna Maria Amidola. She yielded her time to me. She had a last-minute family situation pull-up. I'd like to read a letter that she had asked me to read, if you're okay with that. It's a couple minutes.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thank you, sir. This is to, again, this is Anna Maria Amidola, thirty-two twenty-four Green Garden Boulevard. She says, I am a resident of Green Garden Boulevard. I see you are a relative, relatively new city of Erie employee. I also see you are a member of the Bike Erie. I have a question to how someone new to the city of Erie employment and a member of the Bike Erie has such a prominent role on the Green Garden Boulevard Bike Path Project. I understand as communication director, your job is to get everyone on board with the goals and visions of the project. What truly concerns me is the video you are, you were a part of posted on YouTube. The narrator thanks you for arranging the slow rides and the narrator proudly announces that she is not from Erie, had never been there. As she narrates the ride, she mocks the residents of Green Garden Boulevard, people she has never met before. She knows nothing of us. But you know, but you do. You are the residents, these residents of the city you work for, the taxpayers who pay your salary. You seem to have no problem condoning her behavior because you posted it on, on, online. Now you are going to be a part of the decision-making on this project. How impartial could you be? I see this as a definite conflict of interest. For the integrity of this project, and I ask you to be removed from this project. And again, thank you. That was Anna Maria Amidola. John, thank you, thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is John Presonia, twenty-seven oh three Green Garden Boulevard. And I'm here representing the Green Garden Boulevard Association. I would just like to read a couple of the emails we've received from the city officials. The first one was sent on March thirteenth. It says greetings, oh, excuse me, wrong one. The first one was sent on Friday, March tenth. Hi, everybody. I want to give you a heads up on what is now planned for Green Garden Bikeway. We had several talks both internally and with our consultant, and it has been decided that as of now, this project will be stopping the bike lane at Twenty-Sixth Street and not continuing along to Thirty-Eighth Street. The current shoulder will remain as is with available on-street parking. We will, however, be installing bike route signs at certain locations in the tree lawn next to the roadway to still inform bikers that this route will connect to Thirty-Eighth Street. The idea is that they will ride in the parking lane and traverse around parked cars when needed. We will also be upgrading any inlets that are currently not bicycle safe. Once installed, we will continue to monitor the entire bikeway for operating and safety concerns, so modifications could be made in the future. However, for now, this is the plan. We will be issuing a press release containing this information on Monday, but we wanted to give you a heads up prior notice. However, we do request that you refrain from discussing this publicly until a press release has occurred. Thank you and have a great weekend. Bill. Now, everybody on the Green Garden email chain was very happy with that letters. Everybody was, it was a win-win situation for all of us and we all thought it was over. And then on Monday, we received this letter from Chris Mellett. Greetings. I am aware of the city project engineer Bill Hayden's communication with you on Friday, March tenth about the Green Garden Bikeway. After receiving more feedback over the weekend, we decided to take a step back on our Green Garden Bikeway plan and give us time to obtain additional resident input. We will conduct an online public survey from March sixteenth to March thirtieth to collect data about the city residents' preferences. We will then evaluate to review those results with the mayor and the city council and will make you aware of the next step before the final plan is released to the public. Sincerely, Chris. Now, our question is, over a three-day period, how did it change so dramatically to a situation where we all were happy with something to more information needed with an additional survey? And we, we have asked if we could get a copy of that survey before it goes out so we could see what kind of questions they'll be asking. I, I get a ton of surveys myself from organizations saying, you know, do you like birds? Would you like to join our organization? You know, who's gonna say no to something like that? If somebody says, do you want a bike path in the city of Erie? Everybody's gonna say yes. But if, if the details are not put in that survey, it's gonna be worthless information for everybody involved. So there again, I'm just asking for a copy of that survey so we can at least review it before it goes out on the sixteenth. And just further information that why the plan has changed so dramatically over a three-day period. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Gary Lackey. I live right next door to John on Green Garden. And I'm backing up just a little bit into the two thousand and twenty-one active Erie document that you guys all signed on and agreed to. And I, it's a really good plan. I love the idea of a bike route all throughout the city and the internet connections of it. And so I was just hoping like what we heard from Ed Brzezinski, that, that the plan would, you know, could be tweaked here and there and interpreted and especially as it's implemented. And apparently it's been tweaked a lot from the two thousand and twenty-three version. It's a lot smaller and more condensed and more focused. And apparently with what we, we perceive that maybe Chris Millet is referring to is that there's backing up a little bit to think about this. So maybe we, we could still get in some reinterpretation or implementation of page fifty-three. It says on page fifty-three in the two thousand and twenty-one version, there are seven proposed north-south bikeways in Erie. Six of the routes are able to use a single street along their entire length. The East Ave Bikeway incorporates a portion of the Bayfront Bikeway to create a continuous low-stress bikeway, which is what I get it. It's what, what bikers, what I- It's what, what bikers, what, I, I'm a biker, and that's what I would want, places to ride safely and walk safely. Four of the routes, actually, six of the routes, I read that, four of the routes Cascade, East Ave, Downing Ave, and Berg Drive take advantage of existing low-stress streets, LTS 1, because these routes are already considered low-stress. Relatively minimal investments in signs and pavement markings are necessary to create a comfortable environment for people who bike. Pittsburgh Ave is considered high-stress, LTS 3, but change to lane configurations will create a lower-stress environment for people who bike. All these are listed before Green Garden Boulevard. Uh, now, the southern part of Green Garden Boulevard is LTS 1, requires a minimal improvements. And I would, I would add to that, I mean, what Ed Brzezinski emailed to us on Friday last week would be that. I mean, this, that's minimal. Signs in the tree lawn and he didn't even have, you know, painting charros in the lanes, but that would be very low and minimal improvements. But it says north of 26th Street is LTS 3 due to higher volumes and truck traffic approaching the Bayfront Parkway. And then it says unfortunately, the existing street is too narrow up there to accommodate a pavement reconfiguration that would create a lower-stress environment. More significant investments will be required in order to connect the southern part of the city to Frontier Park. It's a dilemma. I get it. Coming down Green Garden Boulevard is easy, going north from 26th to the Frontier Park, it's a tough go. Anyways, removal of parking is not verbalized in any of this document. Relatively minimal means signs or pavement markings. Uh, Bill Hayden's words would definitely work for us. Page 67 speaks of implementation. Immediately upon adoption of this plan in February of 2021, it says on page 67, establish a mechanism for implementing active Erie. An individual or group must take responsibility for tracking how active Erie turns from plan into reality. Some cities invest this responsibility in an implementation, implementation team, which in Erie's case could be comprised of the steering committee or a subset of that group, including both city staff and external stakeholders. We're volunteering, obviously, to be those. We feel like we are the biggest stakeholders of this plan on Green Garden and now the rest of the city is, we're just talking about for Green Garden because we live there. 24/7s, we drive those streets and we're there 36, 365 days a year. So we use those streets a lot, and we're thankful for them, honestly. Page 68, one last thing. Design and build one, this is, this is a projection for, uh, 2021 actually, or 22, but design and build one bike way along existing low-stress streets. It's critical to involve local residents and business owners in deciding which of these projects to move forward on first. Ideally, the first few projects built would enjoy community support and benefit traditionally underserved neighborhoods. I don't think, um, Green Garden is that first choice, and yet it's been set there. So again, we just ask for a favorable reconsideration as you're taking time in these next couple of weeks to consider.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Deontay Quilly. I live at 1158 East 29th Street. Um, and I want to say like, um, excuse me if I misspeak because I'm not sure of every, every person's role who is sitting up here, but what I do understand is it's been the, uh, an initiative or a campaign to, uh, assist with stopping the violence in Erie with the youth. Um, and my question, or I guess what my statement would be to that is, is how can we expect the violence to stop if we're not offering any incentives or any programming outside of what's already established? And I understand that there are things established, but from my understanding in front of, from what I'm seeing in the, in the city is we're dealing with kids or we're dealing with, with youth who are very mischievous. Um, they, they lack knowledge, they lack understanding of the principles and the qualities of life, and there are people in this room who, who can offer that information. And when I say people in this room, not even just the people in front of me, but also the people behind me. Um, every single person in this room understands that they crammed all of our students into one high school, and that's not a city council issue. That's more of an Erie School District issue. But then at the end of the day, we are all human beings. We are all knowledgeable human beings, and everybody sitting in this room, again, in front of me and behind me has some type of knowledge or some type of information or some type of advice to offer to some of these people as well as some of these people's parents. And what I also, what I will say is outside of Ms. Flores, um, I have not seen, um, anybody in this room outside of your own job or your own program putting forth any effort or putting forth any initiative to pour into this youth until it's campaign time or until it's time for us to want to get votes. Um, at the end of the day, I under, I'm a very knowledgeable person. I do all that I can for my community and I offer and I give all that I can for my community. But when I come to these meetings and I hear people come up here and they know how to articulate their word, their words, and they know how to represent themselves and they know how to express their concerns about issues that they're having, we lack that within our community. We have children who have parents who lack that type of knowledge, who lack that type of way to articulate their words, and I don't see a lot of us going out here to get ourselves involved with some of these people to kind of teach them and kind of show them. You can throw any amount of money at us, it's not going to make a difference. Every, it was a lot of people who scammed with the PUA or the PPP, whatever the case may be, a lot of those people are still broke. So money is not going to solve the problem. The programs that we have in place and the initiatives that we have in place, they clearly aren't working because this stuff is still going on. What we need is, we need manpower and we need women power and we need educated people to actually come into these spaces and to come into these environments and not only talk to these children, but also teach their parents, their parents how to be parents. Because unfortunately, a lot of us don't know how to be parents. A lot of us don't know how to raise our childrens. A lot of us don't know how to teach our children about financial literacy, about coping skills, about problem-solving skills. But a lot of people in this room do, and a lot of us will come here and we will express our concerns about, I heard people, um, expressing their concerns about a golf course, about a bike, a bike path or whatever the case may be. And I'm not here to say anybody's issue is bigger or smaller than the other, but there are children who are killing other children, and there's a community of people who do not know how to deal with this problem. Now, I've been to the YMCA to speak to some of the children. That's why I said Ms. Flores, because I know for a fact that she has been there. But outside of her and myself, I don't know if any other person in here has been there to at least make an attempt to talk to these people. I know Mr. Witherspoon, I know you have your program, I know Mo that you work in the school, but outside of your program, and again, if I'm wrong because I do not know, and outside of you working in the school, I do not see the two of you getting involved with the youth in your spare time. I mean, it's, it's an hour a day, two hours a day. And again, I can't tell you what to do with your time, but I think that it is, uh, it is a dire need for some of us to start offering some of our time, our education, our services to some of these youth, but not only just the youth, but the parents. Because some of the parents are the problem as well, and because of lack of knowledge and because of ignorance, we do not know better. So you all can say, okay, let's stop the violence and let's do all of this, but we don't trust you all because you all aren't coming to us. I come here and I bring myself into your world, into your zone because I know how to articulate my words. I know how to express my concerns. But there are people who look like me who don't know how to do that, and they will not come here. So you all are hearing their concerns, and we can all sit here and say, well, if the people don't voice themselves, then we don't know what the problems are. But then on the flip side, we all have enough knowledge, enough power to go to those places where this stuff is going on and start knocking on doors and start going into these schools and start going to these community centers and literally asking, how can I help you? Because unfor, I would love to see every citizen who has a concern in the City of Erie being here, but unfortunately, they don't feel comfortable doing that, and they don't trust that they're going to be heard. You all have a position, you are all elected officials, and if all those people voted or not, you all got voted into these positions. So it is your responsibility and it is your duty to do something about these issues and these problems if you're going to continue to try to cram it in our face to stop the violence, stop the violence, because there is no positive reinforcement. I do not go to work if I'm not getting a paycheck. You all are not going to work if you don't get a paycheck. So if you don't go above and beyond, we can't teach these kids anything. I see, but I mean, if, if, if we're going to say stop the violence, then let's offer some, some initiative and let's put forth more effort than we already doing outside of our political position, also outside of us being elected officials and outside of our, our jobs, and let's take some time like Ms. Flores did, and just at least a small effort is come talk to some kids and go knock on some doors and come to some parks and go to the community centers and go to Erie High. And every single thing that I'm saying, that I'm suggesting that everybody do in this room, I do myself on a regular basis. So I'm not asking anybody to do anything that I have not done, and if you all want to continue to sit in those seats because I know it's election time, then start getting out here because the votes won't come. And if I have to do everything in my power to make sure that the votes do not come, I will. We need you all's help and y'all need us. So let's figure out a way that we can come together and let's help.
Your time is up, man. Hey, put your. Did you, did you sign, did you sign in, did you sign in and back with your address too? Says that is? Thanks.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Andrea Robinson. Um, I'm suffering from a concussion, but I just want my voice heard. I think that these landlords need to be held accountable for their un, um, un, um, livable housing, you know what I mean? And they're getting the funding for five months. I just suffered a situation where the, um, penal act found out my landlord was doing a shared meter reading, and my landlord just tried to evict me, but I won, and I'm still responsible for the court fees. I'm just not responsible for the 325 that I was responsible for in rent. I'm coming here being brave and brave-hearted for the girls that ain't here that have to deal with the slum lords. I think they need the really, the, the funding, the federal funding, if it's not going to be done here, I'm going to go somewhere else because I'm tired of living like how I'm living. I don't know if I need to cry to y'all, but listen, Mary Schumberg, I was in an Erie County prison in 2021 telling them when I got my kids, I want somewhere livable. That's all I want. You know what I mean? I can pay my rent, you know, but I ain't going to keep getting the funding, being eligible for stuff for people that ain't even trying to take the mold off my walls and I got a baby with a heart murmur. And I'm gonna go to the news when we all get checked. But I'm just here to let everybody know, I'm representing a community of women, young women. Uh, this is my second time. Um, I'm suffering from a concussion, but I just want to be heard because I think it's unfair that when we report that something is wrong with our house, we are at risk of being homeless with our kids and losing our kids when that man should be, um, rehousing us, you know? Um, and, you know, they find different ways to go around it. So I just wanted my voice to be heard. I got documentation receipts, pictures and everything, witnesses, Sister Phyllis, Sister St. Benedict's. This is my second time here. I appreciate y'all's time. I just wanted to voice my opinion, and I think more needs to be done about landlords taking care of their properties. I can't own one yet.
Uh, my name is Mark Duke. Uh, I live between 34th and 35th on Washington Avenue, and this has been a ongoing problem with people speeding on Washington Avenue. There is not a stop sign between 38th and 32nd on Washington Avenue. I have talked to previous neighbors, I've, I've talked to them all, and they, they know that the problem is there. I've been there for 17 years. I, I approached the city council here probably about 10 years ago, and, and I, I explained to them that, that the issue is just getting way out of hand because I've seen people passing people and the speed limit's only 25, but I've seen people pass people because they're going, you know, 25, 30 miles an hour. Okay? I'm surprised because we don't have that many kids on the, on the block. I'm surprised that somebody hasn't been killed. Now here, uh, I've talked to the city police, uh, on motorcycle, the motorcycle cops. I've talked to them. They've taken my name and number. They said that they were going to talk to the engineers because they're the only ones that could actually do something about it. I never heard, heard a response, and it's, I guess I'm a little shocked because I thought maybe, because they, they know the problem. They have talked to other people about the same problem on Upper Washington Avenue. Here just about last year, um, my boy was living with me and we heard this big bang out when there was a, his, his car got hit out in front, and it was a hit and run. The guy didn't, whoever it was, didn't even stop. Okay? So, but what, what I'd like the city to do is to evaluate the problem and to come up with some kind of a solution. On 35th Street, there is 35th, and then you've got, you've got Washington Avenue. If they could put a three-way stop sign on that, that would stop the situation. I'm telling you, I'm really surprised that there hasn't been a serious accident, and I'm talking like at different times. There, it, it happens mostly after four o'clock when everybody's getting off of work. There are some times in the morning, uh, not so much during the school year because it's the speed limit, there's a school zone for about a block and a half or two blocks. Okay? But the issue is, is these people don't care, and I mean, I just can't believe that there hasn't been somewhat of a serious accident where I was wait, I'm waiting one of these days for somebody to come through my, through my front door, you know? But, uh, I would like somebody to look into this situation because I'm not the only one that has talked to the police about this. And this is something that one of these days, somebody's, somebody's going to get seriously hurt, and like I said, I'm surprised that there really hasn't been a accident. But, uh, you know, that's just like a speedway for these, these people. They start off with 38th Street and all the way down to 32nd Street, and it, it's like, like they go to, like a bat out of hell, and, and, uh, I just wish that, uh, and me coming forward to the city council one, once again, uh, that maybe something maybe could be done. Now, I know they did on 35th Street last year, the city finally put in speed strips on 34th or 35th Street. And out of that, since they put them on there, I've seen one city policeman sit there, he only sat there for about 10 minutes and then he took off. So, uh, I would appreciate it if they could look into this and, uh, and maybe, uh, get some kind of a, a situation, uh, to where they can, uh, do something about it, uh, because I, I'm really concerned and I, I know my neighbors are too. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council and Mayor, Mayor Schumberg. My name is Kathy Schaaf. I live at 2437 East 43rd Street. I'm actually talking, uh, piggybacking on the gentleman who was here before me. Uh, I live on 43rd and Rice Avenue. I actually have three stop signs right in front of my house. Does a stop sign make people stop? No, it does not. Um, I moved there in 1987. Mr. Borja at the time lived across the street from me, and he made sure that our neighborhood was canvassed and taken care of. But as things got on through the years, people don't stop in stop signs, um, all the time. I'm not saying that, you know, it doesn't happen, but, so on the opposite end, on the east side, I have the same problem as the gentleman before me. I do want to talk about how I would really appreciate if you could do something to extend the overflow shelter system, our neighborhood, because that ends April 1st, and I do know people who use that shelter. I also have talked to people who have slept on the floor when there were no cots available, but thankfully, they were let in. But April 1st doesn't mean Erie sunshine 70 degrees, as you well know. So there is a huge need somehow, some way to have something up and running for all those people in the overflow shelters. Thank you. Also, um, I just wanted to talk about speeding. March 14th, 28th in Liberty, three-car MVA with rollover. March 14th, Lancaster and Zimmerley, MVA rollover. March 14th, 300 block of East 36th Street, MVA. March 11th, pedestrian struck, 26th and Sassafras. March 9th, 12th and Yorktown Center, MVA. February 26th, Rest Ridge Road, I know that's out of our area, into Pole, West Lake Road, and a person died. February 27th, MVA, 29th. February 27th, MVA, 29th and Myrtle. February 24th, West 23rd and Pittsburgh Avenue. February 23rd, MVA, West 26th and Peach. February 23rd, West 26th and Zuck. February 21st, West 3rd and Sassafras. These are all motor vehicle accidents. February 20th, West 21st and Cherry. February 12th, 4400 Block of Pine Avenue. February 8th, Route 20 and Town Line. March 8th, and I know some of these are out of the, at the 800 block of Route 19, a pole snapped in half. It's, people are driving distracted, people are speeding, and this summer, it's going to be even worse, because then we have the motorcycle issue. And my husband and I are continually walking around the downtown Erie area, and those motorcycles fly by. They have like the system where they go down the bayfront, go around Dobbins Landing, then go west bayfront, and it's just like a Zoom Speedway for them. Perhaps we can make everything go earlier, because pedestrian, or slower, because pedestrians are really inclined to put their life on the line. I was at an Our West Bayfront Neighborhood meeting a couple weeks back. Kathy Dahl Kemper mentioned about pedestrians in Erie, how unsafe it is, seriously, because sometimes you go to these bigger cities and you see people stop for pedestrians, and they don't necessarily do that. I have this joke going around, telling people, "We're gonna be squashed like a bug out there." Cars go in front of us when we have the right of way, and don't ever, like, you have to literally count to 25 before crossing, even if that little sign tells you to walk. No, it's not always safe. So, seriously, with the motorcycles, just the other day, I was going up French Street, and the car had to have been going 60 miles an hour past me. We have a speeding problem in Erie, Pennsylvania, and I would like to get more officers on the street to take care of it, because back in the day, you could cross a street with a car maybe three blocks away. You cannot do that now. That won't get you across the street safely.
You know, you'd think as many times as I've come here and spoken, I would not be as nervous as I am, but it's, that's, I digress. My name is Adrian Ewing. I live at 2024 Fairmont Parkway, Erie, PA 16510. I am here tonight at the invitation of my good friend Anthony McGowan and our working group. We are doing incredible work in this community behind the scenes, leaders of the black community, particularly, and everybody from folks in business to civic leaders, and we thank all of them for their representation. The first time I ever came to city council to speak to you guys was about 15 years ago. 15 years ago, I was talking about the same things that I'm talking about today. The only difference is that 15 years ago, I really did think that wrongly, that we had some time to address those issues, particularly when we, as it relates to children and children and violence in our youth, which seems to be a cause celebre today. But I don't know if that cause celebre will translate into actual meaningful action that will have a lasting impact on these young people's lives. In Erie, Pennsylvania, we don't have that liberty of time anymore. That 15-year window has now elapsed. As I go through my social media, I see memories every day of, you know, I'm on the news, I'm, we're at city council, folks that know me know, you know? And that's the amount of time that we're talking about. And so now, in my own life, I'm really done with the talking. Everybody can really miss me with all that, they can miss me with all the studies and all the nonsense, because that doesn't mean a thing when it relates to these kids out here. We all, one of the things that I'm interested in attacking is the fact that in Erie, we're reactionary. We're reactive instead of proactive. These kids need a proactive plan. They need a comprehensive plan. We make plans for $3 million bridges, the gentleman was talking about. We make plans. We spent $600,000, did he say, studying that bridge? What? I've got Angela Flegala Woodard here, who runs the Y Center, which I'm coming on board with. I kind of wonder if her whole entire annual budget is $600,000. I doubt that. That's what they spent on studying that bridge. Now, they're gonna spend $3 million on a bridge, and I'm a contractor, so I can tell you, honest to God, dollars donuts, that bridge doesn't cost $3 million to build, okay? Maybe a few hundred grand. That's what it costs. Labor, materials and all, maybe a few hundred grand. But we're gonna charge the city 10 times as much, because we know we can. We need a comprehensive plan for kids that involves everything from criminal justice reform, whether we enter a juvenile into the system, permanently tagging them with a misdemeanor, or even a felony in some cases, for something as simple as truancy, that will stick with them for the rest of their life and sometimes be irremovable from their criminal record. Pay attention, right? We need to plan that comprehensive 5, 10, and 15-year plan for the city that includes educational enrichment. Miss me with, "We're not on the school board," right? No, you're an Erie City Council person. You're an Erie City Council person. I thank you, I really do. I really, you know what I'm talking about, I just thank you for who you are. That has access to quality nutrition, food sustainability programming. The monies are available through the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, I'm researching that right now, the United States Department of Agriculture. City of Erie's virtually never even went after that money. It's a pot of billions of dollars a year. We could be planting gardens in the rear of every home in the city. Reversing of things, owners, excuse me, onerous laws on things like possessing, I don't know, chickens in your backyard, which is illegal in the city of Erie. Again, ridiculous, but we'll spend $600,000 on that bridge, not on the bridge.
On the study.
On the study, okay? I just, I can't get over that. I'm gonna write a post tonight on Facebook, that's gonna go viral, okay? You guys are gonna viral on that $600,000 that we spent on the study of that bridge. That is insanity to me. That is insane. My 17-year-old daughter could study that bridge for you. I mean, what does that, what is that? Like, what, oh my God, okay. And then the other thing in that comprehensive plan, I mean, the comprehensive plan would involve a lot more than what I'm touching on tonight. But I think that comprehensive plans would also involve violence aversion. Understanding these issues, a lot of times comes with education, but it also comes with work experience. I understand that not everybody on any council or any board has work experience with our youth. Some people have children, some people don't have children, some people work with kids, some people don't. Some people have worked with people with different mental illness or substance issues, and some people haven't. In closing, I just want to say this. 15 years ago, I was a completely different person than I am today. I would come in here and we would throw the Molotov cocktails, Wade L. Johnson and I, you know, we were like, burn the place down, right? Mr. Witherspoon knows, right? But today in my life, my door of my life is really open, for the first time and in a way that it has never been open. And I invite you to walk through that door and take that journey with me, because otherwise, to me, it is all talk, and you can miss me and all of our people here in this audience tonight with the talk. Talk is cheap, and that 15-year window has closed. Right now is the time. We got babies killing babies in Erie. Babies killing babies in our city, and we're spending $600,000 to study a bridge.
Thanks. Is there anyone else to address council and public comments? Somebody else yield time to him? Is there anyone else to address council and public comments? Is there anyone else to address council and public comments? We will move on to ordinances for final passage. Lori, please continue the agenda.
Council File Number 16336, Official Ordinance Number 112023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $507,264 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the ARP Revenue Reimbursement to be used for public buildings upgrades. Sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Mr. Troop. The Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16336, and now known as Official File Ordinance 112023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 112023 by yea seven nay zero. Council File Number 16337, Official Ordinance 122023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $750,000 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof. Contribution is from ARP Revenue Reimbursement to be used for the incinerator at the wastewater treatment plant. Sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Ms. Faulkner, The Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16337, and now known as Official File Ordinance 122023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 122023 by yea seven nay zero. Ordinances for First Reading. Council File Number 16338, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $15,000 from Appropriated and Anticipated Revenue from the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PIMA, for Body Cameras, Gas Meters, and Calibration Station. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzinski, The Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16338, having been read, is hereby adopted on First Reading by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16338 by yea seven nay zero on First Reading. Council File Number 16339, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $189,090 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof. The Contribution from PIMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant for Gear, Washers and Dryers and Large-Diameter Hoes. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzinski, The Council File Ordinance, Number 16339, having been read, is hereby adopted on First Reading by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16339 by yea seven nay zero on First Reading. Council File Number 16340, An Ordinance Amending Articles 2, 3, and 6 of the City of Erie Zoning Ordinance to Incorporate Language for Short-Term Rentals.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I may, before I vote on this, you know, I get my vote tonight on this, because I firmly believe that unless we truly have regulations in place to properly police the whole thing, that we're just playing silly games with words. Legally, I don't think Airbnbs can be blocked out of residential areas, but we have to do our due diligence to make darn sure that when we do step forward, we're just not throwing out things, to throw out things and have nobody there to back up what we are going to try to enforce. That's my problem with this whole Airbnb thing, and that's what it was a couple years ago, when I asked for a plan, some type of regulatory, who's gonna do it, when are they gonna do it, how is it gonna be done? It's not there. I understand our chairman told us that this is the first phase of what they want to do with it. I want no part of it unless I know the whole story. So, I vote no. Thank you.
And just a reminder, the ordinance for anyone's inspection is in the back on that table. You can see the regulations as they're being added, and we're gonna have fun writing, rewriting 401 and 303 and the stuff to get that up to speed here quickly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, so, to big, piggyback on Mr. Brzinski, we have to put forward a complete ordinance with complete, all the variables spelled out for the community, and to include how the city itself is gonna, is gonna police it and how they're gonna regulate it. And those things need to be ironed out.
Call for the vote.
Can I have discussion?
Oh, no, sorry, sorry.
Being newer on council, just here for a month, I've been following this debate for over five years on short-term rentals. While I understand from a public administration standpoint, it's not perfect, as most laws and ordinances aren't necessarily perfect, but I think, given the fact that we have been discussing this as a city, as a community, we are in desperate need for regulation, we have a commitment between ourselves and other city officials that we will continue adopting and adjusting and doing what we need to do to fully regulate this. We have to get something on the books, we have to get something passed, and as it stands right now, it incorporates both sides, officials, and it's possible to enforce.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote.
Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Flores, The Council File Ordinance Number 16340, having been read, is hereby adopted on First Reading by City Council. Mr. Brzinski?
No.
Ms. Faulkner? Ms. Flores? Mr. Keyes? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Nelson? City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16340 by yea six nays one on First Okay, in old business. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Flores, Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that pursuant to the provisions of Pennsylvania 47, PS 4461B3, in a public hearing held Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, the request for the transfer of Pennsylvania Restaurant Liquor License Number R8337 from Fun Eats &amp; Drinks LLC, Mill Creek Plaza, Unit 250, Interchange Road, Mill Creek Township, Erie County, Pennsylvania, to Tops Market LLC for restaurant facilities within the City of Erie to be located at 1702 East 38th Street, City of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, with the understanding that the liquor license will be transferred to only that location. Be hereby approved. Mr. Brzinski? Ms. Faulkner? Ms. Flores? Mr. Keyes? Mr. Troop? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Nelson? Resolution passes, yea seven nay zero. This takes us to new business.
Move the balance. Mr. Chairman?
Any separations? I'll separate number one.
We need a second.
We need a second on that.
I'll second your moving of the balance.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Second from Jasmine to move the balance, Ms. Flores.
Any separations?
Any separations? I'll separate number one.
Separate number eight under transfers.
Any other separations?
No. Call for the vote.
Motion to move the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Nelson. Separation, number one, in new business. A resolution that Erie City Council will vote regarding the employment status of a probationary employee.
This is a personnel issue, there will not be any discussion. This was a hearing that Mr. Witherspoon and Mr. Keyes were not able to make it to, so they will be abstaining from voting. I'm gonna make a motion from the floor to reverse the employment status of the probationary employee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Clarification again. A yes?
A yes would be a reinstatement. Call for the vote. Oh, sorry, you gotta write down that motion, don't you? Oh, sorry, you got to write down that motion, don't you?
This is a resolution to reverse the status of the administration and reinstate the employee. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon?
Abstain.
Oh, you're abstaining.
Keys and Witherspoon abstain.
Brzezinski, Faulkner, Flores, Troop, and Nelson. Resolution passes yea five, two abstentions. Number eight, the transfer. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Erie, the following amounts be, and they are hereby transferred to the Department of Finance American Rescue Act funds, $2,500,000 from the DECD Brownfield Site redevelopment to the revenue replacement. Discussion?
So, I separated this because, you know, last year, when we had ARP funding, we appropriated ARP funding into certain buckets and into certain categories, and for specific reasons. And I believe that, you know, if those specific reasons, you know, are not going to be executed, or that they change, that council, one, should be notified, and two, should know what those changes are going to be, and possibly what is going to be, you know, funded that may be different than what was proposed.
I'll offer a little to the discussion. This is, this, as council, before I got here, put it on certain buckets. The buckets did intentionally leave a little vagueness to it, is what we've been told once getting here, and then after that, the final rule came out, which gives us a pretty exciting opportunity to revolve this through revenue replacement and make the impact a little more lasting. So, Chris Groen was at our caucus meeting to answer any questions, and I've asked previous questions to be pretty enthusiastic even of this change. Any other discussion?
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes yea seven nay zero. This takes us to committee reports.
Thanks. You want to go from left to right? You ready, Ms. Faulkner?
Absolutely. Last night, as Public Safety Chair, I had the opportunity to join a countywide event on EMS, fire, and general emergency response. In talking to Chief Walco afterwards, he wanted to put some information forward to ensure the public and fellow council members about some of our emergency services in the city. Firstly, as we've all heard across the news, it's quite a shock to the community that Perry Highway Hose Company will be making changes, may first, to not provide mutual aid emergency services. The chief is actively working with Emergicare to handle this crisis, and is assuring the fact that we will make sure all areas are covered, and the emergency services and ambulance care will be provided in a very speedy fashion. Also, this is a first notice that recruitment will open from April 18 through the 29 for new firefighters. It will be an all online application. The application is $50. The study guide is $15, and I am assured that there should be some organizations and nonprofits popping up to help with those two fees of $65. Lastly, the public is encouraged to attend a swearing-in on Thursday, the 23rd, at 11:00 a.m. for some new firefighters, as well as promotions, as well as, very exciting, a new accelerant protection dog named Horse. He's a chocolate lab. So, that will be next Thursday. In terms of police department updates, last week, there were 941 calls for service. There was also tragically a fatal traffic accident, so speeding and pedestrian safety is absolutely a major concern. Also, there was a sad first for Erie. There were six overdoses in one night. This is another reminder that Narcan saves lives. Get your Narcan training. Keep Narcan on you. It's something we all need to be doing and be responsible for. And those are my committee reports.
Just to specify, not all six of those were fatality. There was two fatalities.
Mr. President, I don't have a report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report is to reiterate the presentation of Mr. Ed Dawson. I'm a member of BLT and SD. That's Sunday Drivers. And BLT is not bacon, lettuce, and tomatoes. BLT is Brothers Linked Together. And about half of the organization are seniors. The others are younger. Mr. Jebby Bowen spoke about the care of the golf course. He's a professional. He retired from teaching golf at Penn State Baron. He knows what he's talking about. We need to take that very serious. Hope the administration will take a look at the no golfing before noon, because the guys are very serious. They will find another place to go.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Keys, can you report?
Oh. Yep.
Mr. Keys has no report today.
I have a little bit of a report. I guess I do sell myself quite short, as far as the efforts that I make in the community. I did go to the teen center, I want to say last week, or probably the week before, and I did speak to our youth. As someone who is the oldest of 12, I recall the Erie School District not being too friendly to my brothers. So, I know that our Erie youth needs guidance, and they need mentors, and they need people who generally care. So, I show up in spaces in my free time to be that person that I wish I seen as a young person. Our Erie young people are worth the investment that, in the time that I put into them, and I'm hoping that I encourage our young people to step into their voice and their power. Because until I had decided to be in this position, I never seen anybody like me in this position. And I know that there's a lot of young women in our community, and young girls, who get happy when they see me walk into a room. And that makes me happy, because I'm encouraging them to be their best selves. I'm a direct care professional, so I work with individuals with intellectual disabilities. So, I'm in the community a lot, and people see me with my clients. So, I'm very approachable, and I guess I don't acknowledge that people are watching. But I see our young people, and I care about our young people, and I hope that more people in positions of power will give them the time that they are worth. Because I'm so sick of looking in rooms and not seeing more of my young people stepping into their power. So, if we want to make our community better, we have to give back. And I don't have kids, but I'm the oldest of 12. So, I see all the kids in the community as my brothers and sisters, or my sons and daughters. And I think that more people need to think like that, because if you're that positive influence in that young person's life, you can change their course of life. For me, I had a bunch of people I didn't want to be anything like, and a bunch of people telling me I was going to end up one way and me proving them wrong. So, I just ask our young people to prove society wrong. Because I see you, I hear you, and until there's more of us in these spaces, it's going to be pointless. So, thank you.
I have to start my report by saying that a girl. I'm very proud of you. I've told you that before. I've watched you grow into a leader, month by month, and I'm very proud of you. That being said, Mayor, give those people on Green Garden a break. Listen to your engineer that made a lot of sense with his first message to those folks. And give them all they want, those folks will work with us. They just want to make sure that ground, they can park in front of Grandma's house for Sunday dinner or whatever. They don't want their parking place, they're afraid, because they weren't part of learning what the whole situation was about. And I know you care about them, so I'm just begging you, please, have them be involved. Give them a year to study it. If we can keep the parking and have the room for the cars to park, they don't park there all the time. They go up and down that road all, very often. So, I think we can find some middle property and help everybody. And that being said, two more days, everybody becomes like me, old Brzezinski. Happy Irish Day. What do you think, old Troop? All right. Have a good evening, folks. Thank you.
Back to Mo, he does have something else.
Yeah, I just want to say, because, you know, I've worked in Erie School District for 25 years now, and I worked directly at Erie High School. And when I tell people that, they say, "God bless you, I can't believe you worked there." But what I tell people is, when people say, "These kids, our kids are being killed, these kids," at Erie High School, let's say we have 2,000 kids, 1,800 of them are really good kids. The kids we're talking about aren't the big percentage of kids we're talking about. Most of the kids that go to Erie High School, or any high school, are just like I was when I was going there. Most of the, so I hate when people say, "These kids." Okay, I work with the kids every day. Most kids, eight out of 10 of them, are good kids. So, let's quit painting a broad brush about these kids. The kids we're talking about, even at Erie High School, it's about 50 that we're talking about, that are, you know, identified as whatever out on the street, and unfortunately, Erie High School, being the only high school, all the problems that you see dealing, kids doing on the street, we are responsible for educating those kids. So, they don't go to Prep, they don't go to McGill, they don't go to Mercyhurst, they come to Erie High School. But it's not all of the kids. Most of the kids at Erie High School do exactly what you tell them to do. They come to school, they do what they're supposed to do. And even some of the kids that are labeled bad, even some of the kids that are labeled bad, are some of the most likable kids. Because I, in my position at Erie High School, I have to be the one to deal out consequences if somebody does something. I get to talk with a lot of those kids. Most of those kids are very likable. They're just involved with some things that, you know, outside of school, and it comes into school, too. But let's quit saying, "These kids." Because if Erie High School was in the 90s, I would have been an Erie High School kid. And I know I'm not a bad kid. Erie High School produced me. It produced my brothers that all went to college. So, let's quit saying, "These kids." It's not all the kids. It's a small percentage of the kids. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Troop. Can I say one more thing? I forgot, I was going to say it.
Mel just asked to say one more thing.
One more thing.
Let Mel go first.
Laurie would probably kill me if I don't say this.
Let Mel go first. He asked first.
Oh, Mel, I'm sorry. Mel, I didn't know. Go ahead.
I just want to, I just want to piggyback a little bit off of Councilman Troop. The kids that he's speaking of are the kids that I have during the summer. I have about 300 kids from nine to 16. We've run the league for 30, this will be the 33rd year. I don't have problems with the ballplayers, male or female. My problem is the young adults outside the courts. All my kids, and I call them my kids, I had to straighten out a father last year. Wasn't a coach, but he's going to coach from the fence. I told him, "He's not your kid today. Right now, he's Mel's kid." He accepted that. We had no more problems. We all have a opportunity, a chance to deal with our youth. They aren't bad. In some cases, they're misunderstood. We don't live with them. We don't know what they go through at home in their community. As Councilman Troop mentioned, he's a product of. I came to Erie over 50 years ago. I'm a product of Newark, New Jersey. I'm a product of gang-infested community. I'm a product of a gang leader. I've been there. I know what they're thinking. It hasn't changed all that much. We just didn't use guns. People said to me, "You are crazy. They're going to run you out of there." My best volunteers are those who have felonies. They talk to my kids. They deserve a chance, they did their time, and they are the best I have. All kids aren't bad. They do some, my mom used to say, "Don't do the manage, don't be managed, boy." Well, they do some things. We got to work with them. Don't give up on them. Don't give up on them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Well, nice job, Mel. You know, the kids that Mr. Troop was talking about are probably the sons and grandchildren of the kids that I had over at East High for 100 years. Erie High is probably the best-kept secret of 800, 1,800 good kids. East High was the best-kept secret on the east side. I was there for 25 years, and people said, "What are you doing at East?" We had the best school. I know some people went to Academy, I'm sorry, but East High was a family school, and they're good people. But that's not what I, what I wanted to say was, we have to talk about Penn State for one second before we quit. Carter.
Oh, yeah.
Carter the star. Fantastic kid. These, they're going for the Nationals, and I'm going to see him in the Olympics one day. I know I am. Great kid and great Penn State opportunity for Pennsylvania. I'm done. Thank you very much.
All right. All right, from, yeah, so he's looking for his third national title this weekend. That's the, that's the big piece of news there. And we got a lot, we've got the Carr family with a little, a boy there from Iowa State. Ohio takes credit for him now, but he's going to be looking for a second national title, so, but Erie can take some credit for that. so, but Erie takes some credit for that. South of here, Spencer Lee's looking for his fourth title, coming from Sagertown. And then we got the, what's the kid, the, the other prep kid down there at Iowa State, 133-pounder?
Tony Robie is the head coach at the Ten Attack. He's graduated from Strong.
He's got four qualifiers this year. I'm sorry, 10 qualifiers this year. First time in their program's history. If you want any other wrestling stats, talk to me. And that's what I do with the youth as well. I used to coach wrestling at MLK Center. So, everyone's giving their resumes for that. I know she's teaching dance with the MLK Center. And when the football coaches invite us to go to practices, Mike and I show up and, and don't do anything at the practice, because it was dang hot that day. As far as policy stuff coming up, short-term rental, obviously that vote happened, first reading today. Once again, reminding people there are copies of that ordinance in back. Once it gets defined, we're looking forward to further regulating it as tightly as it needs to be. So, we'll be looking for that ordinance coming up later in the spring, early in summer. In Green Garden, we're going to be looking at having a study session for that. We've got some emails from the administration trying to come up with a date. I forgot to bring it up at caucus, but I'll share everyone's email on that. But we'll be looking at that early next month. And Mayor has a press conference with that tomorrow that I'm sure he'll be sharing about. Do we have anything from the solicitor?
Nothing today, thank you.
Mayor?
Just two things real quick. One is, we, we're going to Green Garden, 26th to 38th Street there. We're going to talk about that tomorrow at the press conference, too, but what we're going to say is that we received a lot more feedback over the weekend on different things, and we decided to kind of step back from our original plan in order to receive additional input from citizens. And tomorrow, some point in the day tomorrow, it may not be till later in the day, but we're going to post online a public survey on our website and ask everybody in the city interested to, to give us some input. And that survey will also be posted on Facebook and Nextdoor pages, as well as on the Twitter feed. And the survey will remain open until March 30th, collect data about city, and then we'll look at the data, evaluate it, and communicate the results to City Council first as we form, try to form a final plan. And the second thing I just want to mention is the work my team and I do with the schools here in Erie. Back on February 15th, we went to East Middle School and we met with about 25 students there. And there was a lot of good people at that meeting. And it's basically a conversation, an open conversation with the kids that we have. Elizabeth Hertz is there. She's our, you know, district justice. Our chief, Dan Spizzi, from the police, as well as several police officers, including Jamie Russo and Sergeant Tom Lennox, Lieutenant Tom Lennox now. So, that was back on February 15th. And just today, actually, we're at Wilson Middle School with about 20 kids. And again, it's the same group and it's a, getting the kids to talk and having an open conversation. And, you know, one of the first things is always said to the kids is, "There's nothing you can say that's wrong today. We just want to talk to you and listen." And those sessions go, go really good. And I know when I was in high school, I never met a mayor or any police officers or anything like that. I think, I, I think that's a step in the right direction, something that we're trying to do.
All right, and with that, the meeting's adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 9:08 p.m. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner.